Good evening, everybody. This is the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. It is Thursday, May 16th, 2024. It is 7:30. We're here at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kent Way in Byfield, second floor. With us tonight, we have Chrissy Book Free, who is our excellent administrative assistant. We have Martha Taylor, our town planner. Michelle, who you learned who is an associate member. Jack Kelly, who was a member. Larry Murphy was our liaison to the planning board. I'm our ex-fond of the chair. And for tonight, Michelle, who's an associate member, will be a voting member, since there's three of us. We need three of us. Jack, with that, if you want to read the first one or?
Certainly. Public hearings. Tim and Anna Dross, 76 Northern Boulevard, regarding the property at 80 Northern Boulevard. The Office of Attorney Jeffrey Roloff, P.C., has filed a notice of appeal on behalf of Tim and Anna Dross of 76 Northern Boulevard against the Town of Newbury's Director of Inspection Services for his zoning enforcement decision dated November 29th, 2023, issued to the wards of 80 Northern Boulevard as being legally deficient. This appeal is brought pursuant to NGL Chapter 48, Section 8 and Section 15, as well as the Town of Newbury's zoning bylaw, Section 97, 11B, with regard to the property located at 80 Northern Boulevard, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass. Assessors map U03-0-181. And this is continued from 215, 314, excuse me, 215, 24, 314, 24, and April 18th, 24.
Great. So this, we'll wrap this hearing again. And then I think for the first, first deed of business is an extension agreement for this appeal. We have extended the hearing on good faith. And honestly, it's an oversight on the board because we usually, well, we don't deal with administrative hearings that often. I think in 13 years, this is the third. So. My apologies for laying that slip. So Martha, I would just ask, is this, do you have, you've done these before with the planning board or?
We've done extensions, but never an appeal against a decision. We've done extensions for projects that are completed in time.
And was there a discussion with town council about this?
This particular?
Yes.
It started with discussion between Attorney Roloff and Attorney Miller.
Okay. So I'm willing to sign this and extend it to, I guess I'll explain a little bit more. But for the Massachusetts general law, there's 100 days in which, in terms of the appeal period, that we were not aware of. And so we extended the hearing with faith in order to continue it, gather information, and have the property clear. So we'd like to keep with that. And we'd also like to hear and move this application along tonight in order to keep things moving. So hopefully, we're all fully buried with the discussion in order to act as however we are. So I will sign this.
So did June 7th the date?
It's a Friday.
Is it Friday? That's a little problematic.
Yep.
I am to, we are totally happy to provide an extension to whatever date you want. I didn't know what your normal protocol was in terms of wanting to draft a decision. Just what the statute calls for is 100 days to render the decision, which I interpret as voting. And then it typically gives you 14 days after the vote to finalize the decision. It's totally different than the special apartment world where you get 90 days. I know that. If you want more time after June 7th to either, you know, you'll want to decide later tonight, I suppose, whether you want to continue the hearing or close it. But we're happy to extend it to whatever date you're comfortable with. If you want time to draft a decision and review it at your meeting on June 20th, so you prefer a date, a final decision deadline after the 20th, no problem. That's fine.
Okay. Our decisions have been enhanced and let's officially record. And so it takes a bit of drafting. And so in the past, someone might have gotten things done in a week or so because it was a one-pager. And now we've got a better recorded decision that fully encompasses the hearings and the documents and the decision. So that does take a bit of time. Chrissy does an excellent job, but she's only got two hands.
We're not trying to squeeze in time, like I said.
No, but we'd like to move this along for both sides of the resident and the application here. So with that, I guess June 7th, the third Thursday of the month is?
Is the 20th. And I would suggest getting yourselves, you know, so, you know, until the next week to actually sign it and get it filed with the board.
Okay. So do we have a date?
The following Thursday would be the 27th.
Okay.
And if you want to add a week in, just in case, we have no problem with that. We can just handwrite the change on the proposed agreement I sent you all initially. And we can get that wrapped up tonight.
Yeah. So I will put June 27th.
It would have to be done by the 20th and then just make sure this is.
Are we good with the 27th? So we go to draft it, take a vote. You have one week to tweak it and ensure everyone to come in and sign it? Think we can do that?
Do you want me to just initial that date change?
All right. A couple of left off, please.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to hear from me?
I'd like the two-minute recap, I think. And then we'll hear from anybody in public and then we'll have a discussion. And then we'll see where that puts us.
Sounds good. Jeff Roloff, counsel to the petitioners here. I actually think, in my perspective, this appeal is more simple than what it may seem, given some of the sidetracking that we got on. I feel like at the last meeting and some of the sort of disputed issues that were raised in Attorney Sheet's letter that came in after our last meeting. The legal analysis, I believe, is actually pretty straightforward. The Boyd Land Court decision that we submitted with our appeal, I read it again preparing for this meeting. The facts could hardly be closer. I mean, factually, as related to this case, very similar facts. The land courts, the land court judge provided a very sort of reasoned, well-thought-out and articulated legal analysis and basically came to the same conclusion that we're asking you to come to here. Despite what Attorney Sheet says, that is good case law. It's a land court decision. It's not an SJC case, but it's a good case. It's not, it was not overruled or overturned. It's a valid land court decision directly on point. And it provides the roadmap for your analysis. The starting point for this appeal is that the building inspector did conclude that this renovated garage space is an illegal second dwelling unit. It was renovated and established without any permits and approvals. We did not appeal those findings. Neither did the wards. So that was, that's the starting point for your analysis. However, he takes the position that the wards should be allowed to continue using this space, apparently with some renovations as an extension of the single-family use. We disagree with that. That's the subject of your appeal. The analysis from that starting point, we think is pretty clean. The use of that space as a living area, as a bedroom or a living area, it was never permitted. No building permit, no occupancy permit, no zoning relief, no findings, no special permits, no permits. The use was unlawful when it was started. The renovations were unlawful. And there is no statutory grandfathering for uses, unlawful uses, that were never permitted. That's to be distinguished from the grandfathering you get from unlawful structures. So the renovated area is an unlawful area in its renovated form structurally. But we're not asking you to order the wards to remove the area. The structure has grandfathering protection because enforcement wasn't pursued within 10 years of the space being renovated and established. The use of that space as a living area is not protected. That's the Boyd decision. It's an unlawful use that doesn't have the benefit of being authorized through at least a building permit, is unlawful when it starts, and it remains unlawful forever, even if 10 years pass or 20 years pass and nobody sought enforcement. So that's the crux of our appeal. It's important, we think, that the ZBA make it very clear in its decision that the use of this space is unlawful. It's unlawful to be used for rentals. And it's unlawful to be used just as a living area or a bedroom. If the owners or future owners want to use this garage space as a living area, as an extension of their single-family house or as an accessory living area, they should do what every other landowner in town should do if they want to, or especially in the Piad. If somebody wants to use their garage or a shed or some, whether it's attached or detached, doesn't matter, as a living area, they have to come to you and get zoning relief for that, a finding, a variance, something. So they should do. They also have to get a building permit and an occupancy permit. So we're asking you to require them, if they want to use this space as a living area, to do what every other owner out on Plum Island has to do, if they want to use these kinds of structures as bedrooms or extensions, living areas, as extensions of their house or as just an accessory independent space. There are certain facts that have been disputed in this appeal that we don't need to resolve here. They're not relevant to that analysis. The precise date of the garage renovations doesn't matter. The evidence that we submitted was that the renovations were done in the 90s. Attorney Sheet suggests that they were done sometime in the 70s when the garage was built. Either way, it's clear that those sorts of renovations required at least a building permit and an occupancy permit. And I can confirm, Martha Taylor can probably confirm this too. The zoning bylaws were in place in Newbury in 1959, I think. Newbury actually adopted its own building code in 1967. I have a copy if you want to see it. In 1971, they amended the building code to include specifically an occupancy permit requirement. So this work, under everyone's contentions, was done after all of that was in place. So at the very least, they needed to get a building permit and an occupancy permit. When you go in for a building permit and it's in the 67 building code, you know, there's an application. There's a zoning review that's done. There are inspections that are done. There are engineering plans that are required. There are foundational requirements that have to be complied with. There are inspections after construction. And then obviously, ultimately, there's an occupancy permit. And all of that for a good reason. So no one, none of that was done. The space was renovated and established illegally without permits. And the use of it as a living area was never authorized. It still has not been authorized. And that should be confirmed in your decision. The number of bedrooms in the main house is another sort of side issue that we don't have to resolve here. It might be relevant if they come in with an application for a finding or a variance, as they have. But for this appeal, it doesn't matter. You don't have to resolve that here. What is clear is that the use of the garage, the renovated garage space, cannot be used as a bedroom or any other living area for the reasons I just mentioned. If they have three bedrooms in the main house, so be it. That's fine. If they have four, same thing. It's going to be relevant if they come in here with an application looking to demolish the house and build a new one and try to build one that has four bedrooms because they're claiming the main house has four bedrooms. Then it's relevant. It's not relevant for purposes of this appeal because you're being asked to render its termination based on the facts as they exist currently. Future permitting proceedings will be managed at that, whatever future date that is. Again, the Boyd case provides the roadmap for your analysis. I'm not going to go through it here. You have it with our appeal package. It's sort of a lengthy decision, as a lot of these land court decisions are. But I read it again today. And if you just take your time and walk through it, it's directly on point. What they, what the land court ultimately, that also involved a renovated garage. And the analysis there was the same analysis we've been arguing that you should follow here. And in the end, the land court issued an order that this renovated garage space could not be used as a living space and enjoined any such use. It required the removal of the bedroom, the kitchen and dining facilities in their entirety. And it identifies the stove, refrigerator, kitchen, same kitchen counter and all associated cabinetry. And it required disconnection from the set system, all within 60 days. It then went on to say that in this case, based on the zoning bylaw in place for that case, the parties had agreed that the garage could continue to be used for a toilet and a shower that they had established there because apparently, under their zoning bylaw, showers and toilets in garages were typical accessory allowed uses as a sort of garage storage space. So that's just a question for you. But that, the remedy there, and I want to get to the remedy and just clarify what we're asking for as a remedy. It follows very closely the remedy that the land court chose to provide in that context. First, with respect to your power to order remedies here, 48, Section 14, provides that the Board of Appeals in these types of appeals of building permit decisions is authorized to make orders or decisions, reverse or affirm in whole or in part, or modify any order or decision. And to that end, shall have all the powers of the officer from whom the appeal is taken. So your authority to issue zoning determinations and to issue orders, such as cease and desist orders and the like, are very broad. You can do basically what Peter Verdam was authorized to do in the first instance. Again, the Boyd case provides the roadmap. The relief that my clients are asking for here is basically as follows. Number one, because we didn't challenge this part of the building inspector's decision, we're asking you to affirm the building inspector's decision to the extent that it concluded that the renovated garage space constitutes an illegal second dwelling unit, which is what he says in his decision, and also to affirm his order that they stop renting that space. So those two parts of this decision, we agree with. Nobody has challenged those. And we're asking you to affirm those. We're asking you to then, because we think you didn't go far enough to do the following. Number one, determine and state in your decision, your determination that the use of the renovated garage space as a bedroom or any type of living area has never been authorized and is unlawful. So that's a zoning determination. Number two, based on that determination, order the wards to stop using space as living area, limiting its use to the garage use that it was originally constructed for and storage uses. Number three, and this really goes primarily to the enforcement aspect of it, and it's consistent with the Boyd decision, order the removal of the kitchen and bath fixtures. And we're requesting that that be ordered to be done within 60 days. When we say that, I don't think anyone's asking them to go in and tear out their walls and insulation and all the piping and everything else. It's basically the fixtures at the endpoint so that it's not so easy for renters or others to just use it as an extended living area because using it as a living area is unlawful. We are okay with them keeping, so we're okay with them keeping the walls and insulation and the plumbing and stuff in there that's behind the walls. Trying to keep this simple. Maintaining electric and heat, we discussed this at the last meeting. We're fine with that also. Some people heat their garages or storage spaces. And again, we have no problem with them using this as a garage or storage space. So we're okay with the, you know, avoiding having to tear out the walls. And we're okay with them continuing to maintain the electric and the heat. Again, I keep saying this because if you haven't yet had the chance to review it carefully, and you will before you write your decision, I feel strongly that Boyd decision is directly on point. And it provides the roadmap for what we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other, anything you'd like to say?
I think I've talked to a lot of us a bunch of times. Our attorney certainly made clear what we did. We feel that, you know, our investment in our property and the way that we follow the rules for the Piad and what's supposed to happen should happen. I mean, the space is illegal. It's clear it's legal. It's not, it's being used as a multi-unit. We've argued this multiple times. You know, it's not. I can't imagine in any other, I've worked in this field my whole life. My family's been in the business for multiple generations. It's not another town, a building inspector, that somebody would have a legal structure that has no structural plans, no plumbing inspection, no electrical. This would even be to this point. So, but with that said, we purchased our property before the wards did while the Piad rules were in effect. The property has never been structured. It doesn't meet property lines. And if they want to have a separate living space, then they should go through the permitting process and all the rules that are put in place to protect not just the wards, but everybody else that's around them. So that's what we expect.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak?
I don't intend to take much of your time on behalf of Mr. Ward. I'd like to just bring some clarity to this. The decision here today is whether or not the building inspector was wrong. That's what the petition is saying. The building inspector was wrong. He should have gone further. He didn't go far enough. The building inspectors submitted a statement today that I'm sure you've read, saying the construction work done here is obvious to him. It's obvious. This was not built by Mr. Ward. The Dross don't even know when it was built. Their attorneys told you he doesn't even know when it was built? They're asking to tear apart the structures inside of the house without getting into the structures within the walls. But what they're really asking you to do is sit in the garage and have your building inspector sit there and wait to see how people are using it on the inside. There's no evidence whatsoever that Mr. Ward, and Mr. Ward has already said multiple times that he has never used this as a multi-unit residence. It's always, it's been rented as an entire single unit. There's a breezeway between the garage. And that's how it's only, that's the only way in which it's ever been used by him. And really, ultimately, what it comes down to is whether or not your building inspector was correct. That's what the appeal is about. The appeal is saying that the building inspector was wrong. And if you're willing to overrule your building inspector when he's saying it was obvious with all of his years of experience and all that he's doing, I think really what you're being asked to do is send your building inspector in to see whether or not somebody's slept too long on a couch in the garage, whether somebody's living in there in some way, whether they use too much water. You're going to leave the plumbing in there but not let anybody use it? That's what the order is supposed to say? I don't think that that's reasonable. And I don't think it's enforceable. And that's not the reason that we're here today. We're here today, I think, really to affirm what the building inspector is saying is obvious to him and to let him do his job. And I think he's done a great job at it. And that's the only thing I'd like to say on behalf of Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? No? Okay. So discussion with the board? Make some thoughts, what you?
Well, I guess I'll come first. We've talked about this case at length. It's a complicated, I don't want to say it's a bad piece of property. It's a complicated piece of property. There are a lot of issues. But I think it's easy to get lost in the weeds. But it seems like our decision today is to support or overturn the building inspector's decision. So it's a little bit more narrow than all these other vendor issues and stuff. So that's, that's how I'm looking at it at the moment.
I guess the only part of that that doesn't feel like we're overturning, we're just adding on to what he's already said. Sorry, I'm still thinking in my head. I can't question, you can go first. on to what he's already said. Sorry, I'm still thinking in my head. You can go first.
Let me ask a question to just confirm for the record as we're here tonight. The spaces that are behind the garage are a room, a room with a kitchenette in it, and is there a bathroom as well?
There is. It's a, yeah, a shower and a toilet.
And a bedroom.
Well, yes. That's, I called it a room.
Well, it's a separate space from the kitchen now.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
A room, a kitchenette, and a room with a toilet in the set. Or does it have a toilet?
That's correct. It does.
Yeah, and a shower.
Can we keep going?
You can go.
Okay. So, agreeing with Jack that this property has a lot of issues, it has a lot of past issues, there's a lot to be discussed and had. And out of our bylaws 97-11, the definition, it's a dwelling unit, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permit provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation, is the definition in our bylaws of a dwelling unit. And so, you've got quite a lot of history on this. You understand that the record of the structure 10 years has passed. The structure is legally non-conforming. The structure is over the property line. The structure is precariously placed in that it is clearly positioned with a breezeway between it and the house and the other structure, between the garage structure and the other structure on the property, which makes it precarious in terms of definitions and understandings. And our next applicant is talking about a detached accessory apartment and reading through that, preparing for that, and thinking about this case. But I do think this is very simple, and I did talk to town council, did not share my thoughts or my conversation with town council with anybody else, but the understanding of what we're here for the application that has been made. Understanding the section that you cited for Massachusetts general laws and our board's zoning board appeals ability to overturn or enforce or take on the role of the building inspector is clearly understood. But I would, my feeling is that we're not here to take on that role only because it's not, we're not, we're just not equipped and experienced enough to act like that. We have a building inspector. We're a small town. We rely on the building inspector. He does a good job, and we entrust in what he is saying and what he is doing. He is the enforcement officer. We, as board, I feel, do not want to take, and we're very clear on not taking other boards and other committees' roles for the jobs that they have in town, conservation commission, police department, fire department, and so there are other department concom. And we typically get asked when people make arguments against applications, but it's not our jurisdiction. So, to be the enforcement arm, I don't think is our role because of our experience here. That said, I do think that there is an issue with the space and having a bathroom and a kitchen. There's no, there's nothing in the bylaws, and there's nothing in the building code that says you can't have four kitchens in your house if you really want them. But the definition of a dwelling unit and the sanitation and the fact that there is a bathroom there then creates a separate, a separate unit. So, in my opinion, and the wording here is a little different, we either accept, we either deny the appeal, which is an acceptance of the building inspector, or we accept the appeal, which is the denial of the building inspector. So, the wording is just a little bit different. And so, to me, I think that the space and the use and having a second kitchenette and a beach home, even though I do see some issues with attachment, the fact that we're not the enforcement officer, that I would argue the removal of the bathroom then makes it just additional space to the house. People that are there would have to then go into the house, and there isn't a separation. Having the bathroom there means that one side of the house can be locked against the other side. The building inspector has said that it is not a rental unit, it is not a fifth bedroom, it is not, and he, and the enforcement falls to the building inspector's department. And yes, it would be hard to rule, obviously, if there are complaints. We are not land court. In order to get to land court, you could challenge a decision that we make here. So, the building inspector makes a decision. If we were, either way, if we were fine for or against your application, the path to appeal would be to land court. So, that's, if you guys understand what I'm saying or think I'm saying.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I think I'm in favor of denying the appeal, accepting the building inspector's enforcement and adding a condition that the bathroom needs to be removed.
So, the only question I have, Eric, is you said, I'm looking at the land today, you said it cannot be used as a bedroom. I didn't see that in there. This can't be used as a rental, but...
Also, you are listing a fourth bedroom, single-family residence. If the space in question creates a fifth bedroom, it would be in violation of the PIOD and would need to be converted to a different living space. Please let me know when the code violation work has been completed for final inspection.
That's the original...
That's the original letter.
Yes, I love you.
Okay, I look at the modification that the one made.
I don't think I saw that letter.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at this one.
I don't think that's the letter that was provided to me in response to our enforcement request, because he did not in his letter.
This is his original enforcement request.
I emailed that. I believe I did email that.
Just what's the date on that one, Eric?
This is December 27, 2023.
Okay, I was looking at the one dated today. Which is a clarification, doesn't overturn it.
Well, it's saying the number of bedrooms has no relevance. I didn't want to that.
So, did he say then that they can't use that space for an additional bedroom? Because I didn't, I haven't seen that. I agree with that.
I am writing to follow up on my post-enforcement order inspection of November 30th, 2023. As we had discussed, the space that leads directly to the garage from the additional living space needs to have a door removed and a one-hour firewall installed. Also, you are listing, you are listed as a four-bedroom, single-family residence. If the space in question creates a fifth bedroom, it would be in violation of the PIOD and need to be converted to a different living space. Please let me know when the code violation has been completed for final inspection before reuse. So...
That's pretty clear.
Upon accepting, rejecting your application, accepting the building inspector's enforcement, accepting his enforcement letter, it is up to the building inspector to enforce whether that is a bedroom or not. For, to help with that enforcement, the condition upon the rejection of the application before us would include the removal of the bathroom. The kitchenette can stay, you know, they could, some people have other kitchenettes where they want to cook lobsters instead of cooking in the house. That's fine. And so, by doing that, the ZBA has removed the condition that the definition of a dwelling unit is removed from those rooms. And how those rooms get used are per the building inspector, per his original enforcement.
Sorry, not to cut you off, but in addition to his first letter, then his most recent memo, also his enforcement order concerns the use of the space and prohibits the rental either long or short term as a separate space. So, I think, again, that's agreeing, I think, with what you're asking for. He's enforcing it, the use of it.
Right. So, can I speak to the remedy here? Because I'm a little troubled by the perception that your options here are either to accept the appeal or reject it. Those are definitely not your only two options. The ZBA is the ultimate decision-maker when it comes to interpreting the zoning bylaw. I know the building inspector is in the first instance, and I know you don't want to get into code issues. I understand that he's sort of the code expert. But in terms of applying and interpreting the zoning bylaw, you're the ultimate local authority. Before, you know, at this level, it's you. It starts with the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, but that's why they have this appeal avenue, is to bring it to you. So, what we're asking for is not, it is a hybrid. It's accepting part of what he decided, because we agree with part of what he decided. But it's going further than that, because we don't think it's appropriate for them to use this renovated space after making some further renovations, apparently. I don't even know if they're pulling building permits for that. Not clear. But I don't think they get credit for having illegally renovated the space before and can now just go in there and make a few adjustments and then continue using it as an extension of their house without getting the kinds of zoning relief or an occupancy permit, for example, but at least the kind of zoning relief that anyone else on Plum Island would have to get. If they want to turn part of their garage into an extension of their, even if it's attached, let's just take an easier example. They have an attached garage, and they want to put in that garage right next to their existing house with a, even if it has a common wall, let's say, they want to put in there a little extra living space. They're going to wire it, they're going to, you know, maybe it's a bedroom. That would, they have to come to you under the PIOD. It's a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming structure because it's been there for so long. They have to come to you and get permission for that extension of their living space. They certainly can't just start using it for rental, but they also just can't do it and use it themselves. Just like the landowner can't decide to turn their shed into an accessory living space, even if it's for their own use and they don't plan to rent it. They just want to have a little extra space for them, for themselves, for their own guests. They're not looking to rent it, but they want to take their shed, turn it into a living space. Let's say it doesn't even have a bath. It's just a living area with a kitchenette and a bedroom and a bunk bed. They can't do that in the PIOD, especially if they already have three units, three bedrooms. But even if they only have two bedrooms, they can't unilaterally on their own, without, even without a building permit or occupancy, but they can't just go in there and add a bedroom in their shed, because they have to come to you first so that you can evaluate what they're proposing and then apply this defining criteria that you do in most of the cases that come to you in the PIOD context. So, these guys are looking to get a break because they illegally renovated this space. Not them, and this is nothing personal against the wards. The prior owners illegally renovated it years ago, and they're trying to get credit for that, and the law says they shouldn't, and the zoning bylaw doesn't give them an out. And no one here has submitted any evidence or legal authority for them being able to do that without coming to you first and asking for permission, not in the context of our appeal. That would be a discussion of a future application. So, it's not yes or no on our appeal, and you do have the authority to apply the zoning bylaw and the legal, whether or not it's a legal use without having secured any approval. So...
Yep. Appreciate your follow-up, and I think my understanding, we're not trying to reward past dealings. We're not trying to sweep it under the rug, but I, for me, we have an enforcement officer that has looked at it and has made a judgment, and for that judgment, and as you said, a condition of removing the bathroom makes it dependent on the remaining structure of the site so that it would not be a separate rental, which would certainly be more detrimental than the use, than the use of a single-family structure. The fact that it's a room and the definition of a bedroom and, I don't know how we control that and whether it's, you know, just because on the plan it says storage unit or it says office, you know, it could have many different uses, but the fact that it has a kitchenette, the fact that it has a bathroom then makes it a dwelling unit. So, I hear what you're saying. I understand the property has issues. I think the building inspector has set some enforcement, and as you said, if we add to it, I think it resolves and limits, greatly limits the use of that space to a single-family residence, which is acceptable on Plum Island. Could I speak briefly on the removal of the restroom? Hang on a second.
Sir, just, not to keep believing this, I understand, but at the end of the day, we have, there's laws in place. There's no, that's why we have zoning in it. The space is there. We all agree it's illegal and it's not correct. What should happen, as it would for every other resident on Plum Island in the PIOD, is that you pull a permit, you go and you go in front of a zoning board, and the zoning board decides if you're going to give them some relief to allow them to do that. I don't, I appreciate the building inspector in his role as an enforcement officer, but there's process. So, we have consistency. Now, what you're saying to me is the building inspector has a right to enforce or circumvent the rules that are put in place for every other resident, depending on what the situation is. I had to renovate my property. We wanted to fix the garage so we could fit a car in there. Soon as I touched that, I would have to go through zoning, put it up on the lift, all that stuff. So, I went through that process. It wasn't allowed. So, there's zoning, there's zoning in place in PIOD, and all those things are put in place for a reason. There's no words where it says the building inspector makes a determination if they can circumvent PIOD or zoning or whatever it is. If there's a question of how the space is supposed to be used, we want to take this bathroom out, this, we're going to do this, this, that, they can have a kitchenette. It just needs to go through this standard process. It's never been legal, ever, ever, ever. So, the fact is, and every, usually a building inspector's involved once a permit has been pulled, and then there's a question of the structure's not built legally, then he inspects that in the state of Massachusetts or makes a determination if it's safe or unsafe for occupancy. There's no words that it says that a homeowner could potentially build something and circumvent the process, whatever it is, whether it's this homeowner or not. The building got circumvented clearly of what the process is, and then he can make a determination of, in sidestepping zoning. So, it should go through the natural process. If we're going to use this as any occupancy, it should go through the natural process of what the, what's put in place that every resident would have to follow. That's what should happen. I mean, it should be clear.
That is what they did do, and we denied their application to build this, to convert their second floor.
Well, he rejected, he decided to pull, pull that out. It never, he decided to, Mr. Ward decided not to continue to go that, go forward with that, right? It wasn't rejected. It was going through the process and then he...
But he did go through that process.
But he decided to...
Because he wanted to change something.
But he decided to pull the application. But right now, we're talking about the same thing. That's why this came up, right? Because realize, once we see the drawings, that this space is there.
So, he did submit an application. He did get feedback and questions and uncovered a lot of issues about the structure and the legality of it and the use of it and the number of bedrooms. And then he decided that it probably wasn't going to go favorably, so he withdrew.
Right.
Doubt. He's made, the property has been made aware to the town, let's say, or to the public that it has issues. I understand what you said, but we don't go around and just, we have a pre-existing, non-conforming, you know, almost everything on Plum Island.
Sure.
There are a lot of stuff in town that does it, and we don't drive around and just pull up the truck and look at somebody and say, "You, your property's non-conforming."
I wouldn't expect you to do that.
You want to move your shit. So, here with, you know, this is before us, and so we appreciate the application in pointing out the conditions, you know, the wrongful conditions that don't meet the zoning bylaw. But in short of tearing down the garage and those spaces, the use of those spaces remain, remain what? Storage?
Sure.
Yes. Storage and garage like it was built for.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, that's, that's...
So, even if we said that, it still comes down to the enforcement of the building inspector, which is where I'm thinking the issue goes. And if you wanted to press it further, then you could take it to land court and...
But we would live with that determination, though. There is a big difference between you saying, you know, we know it's never been authorized, but we think it's okay, versus it's an unlawful use. Like, as things stand right now, because no permits have been issued, no zoning relief has been granted, right now in the current state, using that space as living area, whether it's a second unit or even an extension of a single-family house, is unlawful. They haven't gotten what they need to do that. If they want to come in next month with an application for a finding to extend their single-family use to include the use of this space, they can do that, and you could even give them time. You know, that's partly why I think the land court in that other case gave them time to remove these things. You have a line of contractors too, but it also gives them time, if they want to come in and pursue your approval to actually use this space as an extension of the single-family use, as a living space, then they can come to you and, as Tim said, go through the normal process for getting that authorization. Right now, they don't have it. If they want to apply for it, that's fine, but then there's a hearing process. They're going to have to explain why the structure, why their proposed use satisfies the criteria. And maybe at that time, you'll grant them that approval. We don't need to speculate as to how that's going to be, because we don't know. In the last application before you, they assumed that the use back there was lawful, and what they were trying to do was to expand it and build above it, saying, "Why is this a big deal? We're just relocating our existing bedroom." And we came in and said, "They can't do that. That bedroom is not a lawful bedroom. They can't just, they don't have the right to relocate it." What they're actually asking for you, what they were asking for you was to authorize the creation of a new lawful bedroom in addition to the three or four that they already had in the main house. That was our contention, and that was in dispute. But as things stand right now, they don't have the authorization, and we are asking for you to render a decision confirming that. Even if enforcement is difficult, we're okay with that. At least the buyer of this property knows that they're not allowed to use that as a living area. If they go out in two weeks and they are doing it in violation of the order, you know, if it's a problem because there are 10 people using it as a living area, maybe we'll be back in front of it. Or maybe they'll just use it illegally, and it'll never come back to you because they're being so careful about it. The fact that it's difficult to enforce isn't a reason not to issue the right answer. That's the point.
Thank you.
I just read that last one. I think that there is, there does have to be some sense of reason. You can't be enforcing rules that are unreasonable that you can't actually enforce, and there has to be some, the reason why these things are handled locally is because there's got to be some reasonable people in the neighborhood who understand that these things work and enforce them reasonably. And my point with respect to the bathroom is that Mr. Ward has a niece who uses that room when he is staying there, who is handicapped and uses that restroom for that reason. He would be much more okay with taking out the kitchenette than taking out the bathroom. Taking out the bathroom simply makes it difficult for the person who's staying in that room to use the restroom. to use the restroom. And that to me is, I don't see the legal basis for that and I think that that is not what we're here to do. We're here to decide whether or not the building inspector was correct, that's the order that was appealed. And removing the restroom would simply make it unusable for the specific people who use that for their own privacy and while Mr. Ward's living there, you know, with his niece when she's visiting. And, you know, when he's renting it out to other people, I don't, I don't know what other situations there are that maybe presented there, but I don't understand the legal basis for removing the restroom. Or, you know, and I would ask also that there's a little more specification as to what removing the restroom specifically means in terms of whether or not we're talking about digging up floors and tearing out pipes or, you know, I, to me, there's no basis for removing the restroom. And if it was between the kitchenette or the restroom and if it's a combination of those that creates this problem, the kitchenette would be much more, much easier to remove and it would be much more acceptable given Mr. Ward's niece who uses that room. Thank you.
I think for me, I'd be a proponent of having both, you know, both the kitchen and the bathroom removed, but definitely the bathroom because that supports Peter Vannett's enforcement of no, no short-term rentals. Once there's a bathroom in there, there's still the capacity that someone could, you know, rent that space separately. And again, then it just comes down to someone enforcing it. So for me, 100% bathroom would have to come out, but I'm a proponent with the kitchen coming out as well.
Yeah, Michelle, I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to have a sink in my garage, which I did, but I don't think I need a bathroom in the garage. And I think it also, as she said, goes along with the building inspector's order that that can neither be a rented nor a bedroom. So that sort of takes care of the niece issue.
I think in that sense, you're going to end up with an appeal from both sides and you're just going to be back here again.
I think we've got to remember the place is for sale. So the use, it's for sale and this is what's going to happen is we don't get a clear determination on this, the next owner's going to come in and this is going to continue to go. That's why, you know, the zoning board needs to, when you take this out, it's not a, I'll...
And to me, when you remove the kitchen, you remove the bathroom, it now is a space, it's a garage with a heater in it, which can be all over. It could, it could be all over town. Everyone could put, and to me, that, I don't know how we control the use of someone putting a heater in their garage and saying, "You can't hang out in that space," or, "You can't watch TV in that space," or... So to me, it is a hybrid of, I think similar to what you're saying, so I would just go one step further with the kitchen.
The real solution in order to control the use would be to have it removed, to have that space at the back of the garage removed, period, once and for all. It would be clearly obvious. To have the dwelling unit and to have sanitary, provide sanitary conditions means that you have to have a bathroom. A kitchen can be a counter with a hot plate, a microwave, a small fridge. And so the kitchenette doesn't, doesn't do it in terms of removing the use and trying to limit this to just space in a house or space of the garage, which it can be. And so the restroom and even having a family member that is separate that wants privacy bodes to the use of using it as a second dwelling on the property as opposed to one dwelling. And if the person that, or if somebody is in the garage using storage space and needs to use the facilities, they have to go into the main house. If people are there and the gathering is large and there's a large beach party, they have to go into the house. So removal to the bathroom, to me, is all encompassing of how that space can be used and separated. And if, if the new owners, adult kids want to have a big bash and they invite everybody and they're all focused to use this one restroom that's outside of the main dwelling unit, that is a different condition than inviting people into your house and having control over the situation because of where, where the bathroom is inside a house. So that is the driver for me to remove the restroom and the bathroom. And I would go as far as to say, yeah, I would probably then now, after this discussion, add that the plumbing needs to be brought back to the main line so that there is no extension to the location of the previous bathroom. That's not removal of a structure? That is removal of the bathroom and the plumbing, it's not removal of the physical structure of the floor walls and the roof.
I think we would call that cut and capped perhaps?
Cut and capped. So I hear both sides, I know this is a tricky property, I know the conditions aren't right. I think we're, we're understanding that there is effort by the building inspector to improve the situation that has been brought before him. And for me, the zoning board would add to that to even improve the condition for which the order and understanding of his enforcement. That's where I stand. So it's, you know, the space is the space and we're not going to take it to the next level to call it out that it can't be quote "lived in" and we're not going to, you know, we're going to make conditions in order to improve the condition that's there for the use that makes it a more similar property to the neighbors. So that's, that's how I see it. And if anybody sees anything to the contrary, then maybe there's another enforcement order that comes up. If you guys want to take it to land court on either side to argue your point, go, go to the land court and let them make that enforcement rule.
I think we're fine with it, with storage, removing the plumbing and that's what, you know, as you said, it's been used as a separate dwelling, niece comes over, uses it as a separate dwelling. That's what our concern is. Plumbing is removed, storage and I think that that, the structure's grandfathered and they want to turn it into a kitchen and a bathroom and all that stuff, they go to zoning and make it a separate unit and we'll go through the process. It would be...
All right. Eric, you're saying, you're saying, I'm not 100% on the kitchenette space, but I am 100% on the bathroom.
I think I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready to accept one. Do we need any more discussion?
I don't think so. So we're at the point that we're ready to make a decision. We're going to close the hearing at this point so that we can make a decision and then move forward. So if there's an option to be added?
First, I make a motion to close the meeting.
All right. You have a second, Michelle?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Pedder?
Aye. And then the motion would be to deny the appeal, confirm the building inspector's ruling with the added stipulation that the sanitary facilities in the garage structure be cut and capped.
And the confirming of the ruling is, is a combination of first, the 122723 building inspector's letter and is updated...
And this letter makes sense.
And today's letter.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Zach. Clear everybody in the room? Appreciate both sides discussing this and hearing this and do please understand when something like this comes, it's very tricky. We are not discussing between the meetings and so it takes a little extra effort on our part that you're, everything, think about it and then act. Where if we were a larger board, we might be able to have some side discussions which may help, which may help advance discussions and understanding and interpretations.
Do you have a timeframe for them to remove those?
It will come out in the decision and we will see a draft of the decision. I think I would talk to the building inspector on what is, what is his typical enforcement. And then as we read the draft, we have an opportunity to maybe add a condition or clarify the condition, I would say.
And just to be clear, so the extension that we signed tonight gives the board till June 27 to finalize and file with the town clerk the decision, just so everyone knows that that's, that's the timeframe as it stands now unless we agree to extend it further.
Correct.
Okay.
Next time we meet will be the 3rd Thursday of June.
But there'll be no discussion that we could participate in at that time, right? No reason for us to be here? Okay.
No, we closed it and I don't think we want to, we could split hairs, we could talk about this for months, but I think that's the decision that, that is the decision that we are at today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We have another public hearing, this one is new. Christopher and Megan Mercier of 31 Rawslane. The applicants are requesting a special permit slash finding for a leave from section 97-10D to C detached accessory apartments of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit that may be required under the common Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use slash project in order to construct an attached accessory unit for use as an accessory apartment on the property located at 31 Rawslane, Newbury Nets. Accessors map U06 lot 124. Staff, can you hear?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know what this is.
Oh, how you doing? I'm waiting here, butters, I just came here to see how it works.
Oh, okay. How are you?
Good, I'm new to town, I started being, so we see how things work.
Oh, yeah, of course. I thought you were part of...
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm curious.
Do I come up here?
Yeah, you just tell them what you guys want to do.
So we live at 31 Rawslane, as you know, and my mother-in-law currently lives with us. She has lived with us for the last, gosh, 11 years. In Atkins in New Hampshire, we came from before and we had an in-law for her and our hope is to build one on our property, conforming to all the bylaws in town. It will just be for her, we're not renting it or anything like that.
Okay. So appreciate you making the application and the statement. You said you just continued it first and so now we're here, hearing it, right?
Continue, no, we... This is new, yeah.
This is new? Okay.
That came in last week, but it's a supplemental submitted for the new hearing.
So, so I've reviewed it, I have some comments. Have you reviewed that?
Well, I just saw this today with the, but yes.
Stay with her, yes, I agree.
Okay. So in terms of accessory apartments, this is one of, I wouldn't say the easier, but it's a little more straightforward because everything is really clearly listed in the bylaws. And so under 97-10D accessory apartments, it goes through the purpose and intent, it talks about the apartment applicability, it talks about general requirements, and then there's a section that gets skipped because those are attached and then there's a section on detached. And so typically, we go through and read it line by line to make sure that we're of the understanding that everything, all the conditions, whether they are applicability, whether they're general requirements or whether they're specific to detach are met.
Okay.
Okay. So in high-level overview, the accessory apartment is secondary to the existing or the primary dwelling, let's say.
Correct.
The utilities from the primary dwelling, sorry, the utilities to this detached accessory apartment need to come from the main house. You can't have some, some separate utilities coming from the street.
Can I ask you a question on that? Or I can wait to the end if you can perform your weight?
Yeah, well, I've got a few more questions. You actually, the intended use, the intended use is in keeping with the purpose and intent in terms of providing additional residential housing for needs of the life cycle in multi-generational households. So with that, then, this is obviously proposed to be detached, we go through the general requirements, the size of the home and the size of the accessory apartment need to be confirmed, the utilities, as I said, need to be confirmed. On the parking, on the site plan, the question of parking comes up and where parking would be provided. And I know that you said that this is for your, your mother-in-law, but once the structure is here, should you all move out tomorrow, then this is existing, somebody else comes in, somebody else has to actually reapply for the special permit for the detached accessory apartment, but your intended use may not be the same as their intended use. And so the bylaw, although, is set up to make sure that the general requirements are met. And if you told me that your mother-in-law doesn't drive anymore, we'd still have to show and have a parking space defined or provided as defined in the bylaw.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Of course, yep.
Okay. So your property has an easement on it for two other properties to, to access their property up at Rawslane?
Yes, the wheel and the driveway.
Okay. Are there any deed restrictions on the easement given to the other properties for access?
Sorry, I don't understand the question.
You have these properties?
Yep.
You have an easement on your property, that easement is given to the other neighbors so that they can...
Correct, the others, yep.
So there's some easement language, that we don't have easement language for?
So we, we own the entire driveway and they have the easement to get up our driveway to their houses.
Okay. So it's a...
Am I not following you?
There is a requirement, and again, if we go, as we should probably just read this one by one, it says that there are no deed restrictions on the property and so we're just having you prove out that there's no deed restrictions on the property.
There's no deed restrictions on the property.
Okay. So we asked that you would submit a copy of the deed in order to, to clarify that and make sure that there's no...
Where would I get that?
You would probably have it with your, your purchase papers of the, of the house.
It's in the application I gave you.
You did? Okay, I don't have it.
I emailed it, sorry. It was in the email.
All right, so they didn't print all of, I did print it, it's...
Yeah, I, before I was under the understanding, just was working with Chrissy that we had, I know we have to go through them, but I'm pretty sure we met all the requirements.
Deed doesn't list any restrictions.
Okay, great. So parking is one, deed restrictions with another, and then I guess I do have, I do have some concern of the placement of the accessory apartment.
Okay.
You've got a house, you've got a patio, you've got a pool, and then you have the accessory apartment. So the person accessing the accessory apartment has to come up the drive, park next to the house, has to go across the patio, through the pool enclosure to get to...
You don't have to go through the pool, you can, or you can go around the pool too.
Is there a direct connection, proposed direct connection from the proposed accessory dwelling unit to the pool patio space?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is there a direct connection, extension of the patio up to the proposed apartment?
Like a walkway or some...
Yes, yes, there's, there's a whole deck area. So from the driveway, there's a gate into where the pool area is and then there's a whole patio around the pool. And it's, there's going to be, like, there's fence there right now, of course, because the pool has to be fenced in, but it will be, that will be opened up to the front of the ADU.
So is there a way, there could be a walkway that goes around behind, past the garden? I think that's what we're asking.
Do I need to have to?
No, you don't, but I, I think, I don't want to say it other than, I don't like the dwelling, you have it for your in-laws, the proximity of the apartment to the house for somebody that is family may not be the best relationship for somebody that's not family in the future. And the intent isn't to create a pool cabana for a house on a property, it's intended to create a, a residential apartment unit that gets used, that gets served as provided... as providing, you know, additional living unit for, for somebody. Understanding it's the family, but its relationship to the pool, to the house and its position where you've put it seems a little precarious for use for someone else that's not family to be living in there as the main house is using the pool and the adjacent proximity to the pool and using this apartment.
I guess our intent for it was twofold. And I do understand what you're saying, you're saying down the line.
Because we care about your current situation, but we also want to make sure that the property and anything that, any permits, any special permits, anything that the zoning board would approve has a longevity for the best interest of the property, the neighbors and the town.
Well, no, I understand that, but as far as if someone were using it after for a rental, I guess is that, what, wouldn't that be up to the owner of it to use it either as a rental and if they were comfortable with it, or for them to use it as a pool house?
Yeah, I think, so, we're a small town, we have bylaws. The bylaws aren't excessive in covering 1,000 different conditions, but if the intent is to ask for this as an accessory apartment, then the benefit of making it a unit, which has a bedroom, has living space, it has kitchen space, it has sanitary space that they've all just went through, means that it has the ability to provide for somebody and for, for somebody to set that up and then not rent it, but just use it as part of an extension of the house, isn't the intent of the bylaw. And we don't, we don't quite have the writing that specifically limits that, but this is why we go through the process and we, you have to submit and we have to review and understand it.
Okay. I guess I'm just not understanding, though, that a future owner would have the ability to decide whether or not the proximity from the pool to the house is too close for their comfort and if it was, they would choose not to rent it out as an AUD. Whereas for us, or you could just use it as a pool house, or if they were comfortable with it, they could choose to...
So, if it was a pool house and it was chose not to be rented, then the enforcement would be that you would not have the special permit for accessory apartment and again, the plumbing would have to be removed. You could, you know, there are people that have had an accessory use structure with, you know, with space, with space, but we're, you know, if it is a, if it has all the pieces of the dwelling unit, then it's a dwelling unit and it's not a pool house.
Who, so I guess who?
It, I know...
Do I not make the, do we not meet the criteria? Like, so, the town of Newbury can decide where on my property I decide to put an accessory dwelling unit?
I'd like, I have other questions about like the neighbors at 35 Rolssling and where their house is in proximity to this proposed apartment.
I don't know which one 35 is.
So, well, let's just say any neighbor, that the fact that we'd like to understand in terms of the, what is proposed, like where the doors, where the light's on, like, do you have a back patio that's separate just for the proposed, for the apartment? Does that have a light? Does the light, it's 13 feet, 10 feet is the dimensional setback, which you're pretty close, if...
Is that the house directly behind it?
Yeah, so, if these people had a house here and you're adding an apartment and you're adding lights and you're adding lights that shine on a back patio and there's not sufficient screening, then you're basically affecting the neighbor and we have controls to try to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay. So, they actually just built that house behind us, right? That was not a, that was not a house.
Pretty close to the property line.
Correct.
And you live in the saddle.
That actually, that piece of property used to belong, it was done before we bought it, but that property, the one that you're referencing, the former owner sold them land so they could build that right in the backyard. That was not there.
How do they access that property if it's called Rolssling?
Off of Shandell, it's an extension off of Shandell.
Because it's in Newbury, they call it Rolssling and you access it from Newbury?
It's Shandell extension, I know, 23 Shandell is an extension. And that was, that was finished, actually, within the last year. We've been, we've been dealing with that construction for two years since we've been there. And they're lovely people, but they just built a ginormous house
A very big house.
Right behind us, right on top of our pool. Which was already decided before we built, we knew it was going there.
I have a question just on this plan. This 100-foot buffer line, is that from the pond?
Mm-hmm.
So, this, do you, does your house now, do you need flood insurance? Like, this is within that 100-foot buffer line?
We do not have, we don't need flood insurance, no.
But the new structure is in the 100-foot buffer line, I don't...
So, that's wet, then it'll have to go before conservation.
Okay. So, they would talk about that, right?
Yeah, that would be there around.
Yeah. So, you have to go through conservation?
How close, how close is it showing it?
51 feet.
From the pond?
Yeah.
We were told that by the person who did the survey that we may have to go in front of conservation.
Right, yeah, because you're within the 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay. And I think they just said that that would be putting like extra netting and whatnot, so nothing ran into it?
There'd be erosion controls and septic controls and things like that.
Okay.
You know, they might impose other conditions as well.
Okay.
Are you on septic system here or are you a public?
We're a public, yeah.
How many bedrooms are in your house now, your current house?
Five.
And, okay, so the size, obviously, the size of the existing dwelling, but the size of the proposed structure is 720 square feet, so that's just a single floor?
Yes.
As laid out? Is the, I'm sorry, I don't have all the drawings that were submitted by email, so I'm kind of going over a few things, Jack, if you have those. Does the intended design of the house match, of the apartment, match the house?
Well, I don't think we have the exterior versions, we just have the floor.
Down, there are any elevations.
Yes, we, it's gonna, the intended look of it is to be a cape, just like ours is.
And on the floor plan, can I ask, what is the 12 by 12 bump out?
We were just gonna do a little sunroom for her, just so that she could have a little bit more space.
And no exterior access, just no windows?
Oh, windows all around it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The whole thing would be windows all, all around.
All right, so, detached accessory apartment shall meet the following general requirements. Lot size, minimum lot size for accessory apartments in detached structures in existence of the date, that's not it, except for apartments with detached structures constructed after the date of the adoption of this bylaw shall be 60,000 square feet. Says area is 131,000 square feet, so we meet that. Access where accessory apartments are permitted in existing detached structures and any exterior modifications. Assume that in terms of building new, that the appearance and purpose for which the structure was originally built, the accessory apartment is incorporated into a new structure, the new structure shall be compatibly, compatible in style with the principal dwelling on the same lot. If it's a single-story, 720-square-foot building, the proposed building scale shall be consistent with the single-family residential character of the lot in the surrounding neighborhood. Abutting properties shall be protected from the proposed use on the site by provisions of adequate buffers, screening against light, sight and sound. So, at 13 feet, the question of offense of screening, of landscaping, and where you might have lights in terms of any access in and out of the unit. So, if there's windows and the only, the only access is through the front door, do we have elevations?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's go to...
Is this like a little porch to use columns and stuff?
Yeah, part of the lot, just up to the pool area.
That you're talking, yeah. You need harmony, is it?
Yes, so, part of the lot that goes up to the pool.
You have, in terms of the site, and it seems in terms of everything, that you have the size of the lot and enough area to put a detached accessory apartment. I do find it problematic that the accessory apartment backs up to the pool patio, that's an enclosed protection around the pool and that somebody has to go through the pool space in order to access their, the apartment. As you said, and as we understand, there, in terms of family relationships is one thing, but in terms of having a structure that has the ability to be rented to somebody else that's independent of the people living in one or the other, it does not seem adequate to make somebody traverse the pool, enclosed pool enclosure, to access this apartment. If it was adjacent in another direction and you could access the front door without going through the pool, that would be a different story. But the apartment is subservient to the use of the pool and that does not seem to meet the intent of the apartment on the lot.
Is there, is there writing that states that it can't, I don't understand how, it's very easy to get to it, it's not, it's right off of the driveway. The walk, there's a fence for the door, it's, it's a 30-second walk. It's all paved.
The existing home and the accessory apartment shall comply with all applicable health, safety, building and other applicable codes in effect at the time of the granting of the building permit and the special permit where applicable. I think I'm calling into question the safety of somebody having to go through a protected area to get to their apartment. The fact that two separate entities can use that same area, it doesn't seem like a good placement of an accessory apartment. The fact that you're very close, 13 feet, to the property line and somebody else in terms of how they use their space also doesn't seem like a great location on a lot that has a lot of space on it.
We were just trying, we were trying to make it so that it was also not intrusive to the neighbors, that a lot of thought went into the placement of this so that it wasn't an eyesore to people. It's a very cute structure, but to not be in the sight of all of our neighbors. But also to serve the house for future use too, for somebody to bring value to the property as well. It doesn't have to be used as an ADU, it could also be used for the pool if somebody didn't want an ADU on the property. It was, it could serve two purposes. So, there could be somebody that moves in there that doesn't want to rent it or does not have family to use it.
The buildings, if you went to the building inspector and asked to build this structure as a pool house, he would reject you and say you can't do that. So, to say that you're looking to possibly use it as a pool house is part of the problem of its adjacency to the pool. That's, that's, that's where I'm at.
What, can I ask why he would reject it as a pool house?
Because of, you're having a separate, because the structure could be used as an accessory apartment and you're seeking to use it as an accessory to the main dwelling without calling it apartment and if it is an apartment, then we have conditions, so...
We talked to Peter about it, because we talked to him about it and where it would be placed and he didn't see an issue with it serving both purposes. Is the building inspector correct?
He is.
My husband talked to him and...
But it's our, it's our, it's our special permit that needs to be granted. So, in terms of buildability of, you know, he's sending you to us for the special permit, we're reviewing the special permit. If he feels it could be built in that part of the site, that's one thing, but he's not, he's not the granting authority for reviewing the conditions of an accessory apartment.
I just don't know where in the, in the bylaws that you're reading where it specifically says the, I have a walk, I have a big walkway to, I understand there's a pool there, but there's nothing in there that says a pool can't be within X amount of feet from an ADU. I think that's your, that's your personal opinion and I understand you're privy to your own opinion, but there's nothing in what you're reading to me that says that I can't put an ADU that has a safe pathway, there's nothing unsafe about it, it's completely paved. I meet all the other criteria of it, but it's of your opinion that you don't like that you have to go through a pool and there's nothing in the town laws that say I can't be next to a pool. My house is next to a pool.
There's, there's nothing in the bylaw, there's nothing that says, you know, where you're located in terms accessory apartment and building in proximity to a pond, you know, that's under conservation commission. The building commissioner will, will understand the building and the construction of the actual structure. Our thought of this detached accessory apartment as it would be used by somebody that is either family or somebody that is not family is, is the concern for its longevity and the use of, well, we tried to use it for family and it didn't work, so we're not gonna, and it's too close to the pool to rent it to somebody else, so we're just gonna use it as a pool cabana, isn't the argument that, for positioning and the location of it. So...
But I don't understand how you can, you can tell me where I can and can't put it on my property when I meet all the criteria for and I have a safe, I have a safe access point to, to the house.
The safe access, well, and I'm questioning the safe access that, I don't think, opening the gate to walk across the pool patio with a pool to get senior residents is, is a proper way to access the apartment that separates the apartment from the pool so that if the main dwelling is using the pool, it is separated and the person that is in that dwelling unit doesn't have to cross that as they're using it. There's some separation of use here.
It might also be a question of precedent, I mean, I've been, there are plenty of pool houses or cabanas or whatever in Newbury, but I'm not aware of any ADUs that access through a pool. Maybe there are some, but maybe you know of some.
How do I, can I just say it's a pool house then?
Well, it'd be a separate application, I think, wouldn't it?
I'm fine calling it a pool house, I, I don't care if it's a, if it's labeled an ADU, that's, that...
Is a pool house required by, except the whole line, planning?
I don't think planning would have any jurisdiction over that, do you think, Claire?
No.
Well, then that adds another bedroom to the main dwelling?
A lot of it's a pool house.
Let's just call it a pool house.
But it is a dwelling, we just went through this. It has a room, has sanitary, and has a kitchen, so it is a dwelling unit.
No, I'm suggesting that were she to withdraw her application for ADU and ask for a building permit for a cabana, or whatever you want to call it.
So, can I maybe suggest something instead of allowing this whole thing up? Great. Is it possible maybe to build a walkway around the fence? So you enter it, so...
I can absolutely, but I would like it to still have doors to...
Yeah, I guess that's the part, that's a question, that I know. And the safety of that part.
So then, can I just call it a cabana, a pool cabana?
I don't think it could be, it's just an ADU.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna... Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna, someone couldn't live in it.
Yeah, it's not an either or, and so we're, we're trying to preclude the, you know, part of it is precluding it from being a glorified pool cabana because it didn't kinda work out for an apartment. And so that, that's where I'm calling in the question of its positioning and its location and its relationship to the pool and the fencing securing the pool.
Could I put a door on the, on the twelve-by-twelve sunroom that she could enter through there so you don't have to go through the pool? So there would be two entrances?
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, but what about also just only having a gate in the pool, not, not having the pool fence extend up to the, the structure of the house?
I'm sorry, say that again, what about what?
So you, you step out of the house, you're on your...
Patio.
Patio, and then the entrance to the pool is a gate. You're not, you're not taking the pool and extending it to the structure in order to make the structure part of the enclosure of the pool.
So I need to put a gate in front of...
Yeah, to separate the pool use from...
That would look horrible.
Well, yeah, but that goes with the intent of what you're, you're doing, you're, you're, you know?
But I'm giving, I'm, I'm, I'm giving a remedy to your concern. Your concern is that somebody would have to walk through the pool. If I give another entrance in the sunroom to the house, they no longer, they have two egresses now. They can either enter it from the pool or they could enter it from the side from the sunroom.
And my concern is that your positioning and location, you know, it looks like a duck, it smells like a duck, it, it basically is a glorified pool house, and if situations don't happen where somebody is not living there, then it turns into a pool house that it shouldn't be. And so that, that is where the positioning, the location, and the understanding of how you access it, both from around the pool and how you access the apartment to the pool is controlled. And I know it wouldn't look good, but you're basically making an apartment that abuts and is, is basically part of the pool function, and that's, that's not a detached, a detached accessory apartment.
I just, I, I just don't understand how, how you, you can say that based off of what that says. There's nothing that says I can't put it there. There's, there's, why couldn't, if someone was renting that house, say, down the line, which we will never use it, is that, who's to say that they can't use the pool if the owners, the, the...
I'm not saying they can't use the pool, but I'm saying joining the pool to your accessory apartment and joining it to the house is, is not a detached accessory apartment.
Why?
It's a pool cabana.
Why can't it be both?
You can't have both.
Why?
Because then you would have to remove the kitchen if it was a pool cabana, or you'd have to remove the bathroom so you didn't have both.
But why can't it still be just called an AUD that has access to a pool? It's still an AUD that has access to a pool.
Right, it just doesn't open up in a grand way to have its portico right on the pool deck.
What does that matter, but I, I just don't understand why that matters. I'm not trying to split hands, I just don't understand why that matters.
Because we'd like the intended use to stay the intended use and not drift into something else because it kinda sorta, and so the positioning of the house to relation to the pool to the house seems to matter when somebody, you know, would rent this and would drive up and have their parking space and be able to independently access their apartment.
Why does the town of Newbury care on...
Because we don't want to exacerbate conditions of expanding properties. That's the whole point of zoning, is to have some control and some limits and some definitions around what can happen on a piece of property so that everybody has the same rights and conditions. And the town of Newbury has chosen to allow accessory apartments either within or detached, and they have these regulations.
But there's nothing in that regulations that says I can't put it there. There's nothing in there that says I cannot put an AUD there, aside from you saying you don't like the idea of someone having to walk around a pool. You're saying that, the paper doesn't say that.
Just go do it and don't come to ours. I mean, you're here because you have to...
Oh my goodness, really? I'm, I'm, I meet, I meet all the, I meet all of your criteria, I just think you're trying, I just think...
Existing homes and accessory apartments shall comply with all the applicable...
Why would you tell me just...
...safety, building, and other applicable laws, other applicable codes in effect at the time.
But I do.
It's a safety issue. And I'm telling you it's a separation issue, and it's our judgment in which to make, to understand that the detached accessory apartment meets the terms and intents, and I can go through the intent, the intent here.
So you're telling me that I should just go and build it, but I'm trying to go by and do it...
No, I'm trying to tell you that you, you're looking for specific, I gave you a specific reference, it's ninety-seven dash ten D...
That says I can't be next to the pool?
It, I'm calling it, in my opinion, I think it's a safety concern.
They do list, we do do a pretty good, the town does a pretty good job of listing all the reasons why you can get an accessory dwelling unit, and one of them is not a pool house. You know, that's just for multi-generational living, to encourage families to stick together, to provide...
That's exactly what we're doing.
Right, actually, we agree with all of that, it's just the safety issues, as Sharon said, and that's kind of, that's one of the things that's hard to spell out. Each case is different, so you have to have some judgment.
And multi-generational houses, if somebody moved in to a, to an accessory apartment and had a child, it wouldn't be safe to have the, the apartment unit open directly into an enclosed pool?
Where actually an elderly person, who might not be stable on the patio, and they have to go right past the pool to get to their...
So protect the stability, property values, and residential character of the neighborhood by ensuring that the accessory apartment meets the criteria and is specified in this section. I, I don't think we have any problem with, with your property, your size, and it's the location that is the issue in terms of having an accessory apartment is, is what I'm not comfortable in its location because of its, its, you know, ability, and you even said to possibly use it as a pool house. So that's, that's where I...
So what would make it a pool house? Can, can I understand what would make it, what would...
Well, a pool house is usually attached to an enclosed area that is of the pool. So if that is a pool house, so that you can go use the pool and get into the pool house without having to go in and out of a, out of the fence.
So what can I have in a pool house? How can I make it a pool house?
You could not do the bathroom. That would be a pool house. You could not do the kitchen, but maybe put in the bathroom. The, the struggle here would be accepting the bathroom. Because once you have the bathroom and once you have a counter space, then you have the means to make a separate dwelling unit, which would be a detached accessory apartment, and if you don't have a special permit, then it shouldn't be had on the property.
That's kind of the struggle you heard us go through in the previous applicant.
So we don't wanna create something that has a condition to, to be something that isn't, that isn't officially granted. It's not supposed to be a pool house that has all the ability to be a separate dwelling unit. You can't have a separate dwelling unit on your, your property. You can have a detached accessory apartment, and the positioning and the location and the size and the relationship to, of that detached apartment to the house is the purview that the zoning bylaws are trying to govern and control.
May I ask a question? Could she in theory have the, the pool house through a building permit and then place the detached accessory unit somewhere else on the property where it would fit? Where it wouldn't, wouldn't be considered a pool house?
Yeah, you wanted to build an accessory structure and you have the size and, you know, you meet the general FAR of the...
To what?
...cooperating the lot, you can do that.
Move the, move the detached accessory apartment somewhere else on the property, not near the pool, but get a building permit for the pool house. Talk to Peter about that. That way you could still have both, and then we could do a special, maybe we could do a special condition, that the pool house could never be used as the ADU, and the ADU can never be used as the pool house.
I think if the fence is continuous around the pool with a, with a gate and the house is, the apartment is moved back so that there's some space between the apartment and the enclosure of the pool, and you have the path that goes around, that's great. That, that in terms of the intent of creating an accessory apartment that can be used by, by family or any other generational members would meet all the, meet the requirements and, you know, it wouldn't and couldn't be construed as a, as a pool house.
Can the gate be opened to the pool?
Yes, but the fence, you should have a continuous fence as you do now, which actually looks like is being, it's kinda proposed, but can't quite read the plan. But the, the fence should go around the, the pool patio.
So could I have the fence go to the pergola and then opens to the pool? Would you, right, as, so long as there's a fence that, that blocks off the pool from the ADU?
Yeah, I would think you'd wanna not have the fence hit the pergola, because as you said, and I would agree, that that would be kind of precarious and ugly and kind of a misunderstanding, but if there was just some separation between that pergola and the fence and a short walkway that brings you to a gate and not a whole opening, then I think you have control of the pool area and you have control of the apartment. Somebody can, doesn't have to walk through the pool if somebody else is using it in order to access their apartment. And you provide the parking space on the plan for them, I think you've met all the requirements, and that it can't be misconstrued as a, it's still could, but at least it's, it's not apparent that the fence is going right up to the front of this structure, which is...
So I just move it back a little bit?
Move it, well, you have to move, yeah, you can be within ten feet and then you'd have to slide it closer, a little closer to the pond. And you'd have to show us how the fence of the pool is not, not engaged with the house, but there's a gate that separates the pool deck from access to this apartment.
But so we're, so I'm, I'm the same understanding as you, that, that, the fence that separates the house and the pool can be the same fence, it just opens?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm, it's a simple diagram, you have, this is pool. So this is the...
Can I come up closer?
Oh sure, yeah, please do. This is the apartment, this is your, your pergola, this is the short walkway, and here's the pool, and here's the fence.
So I can put like plants here and all that, that's fine?
Yeah, and what I'm not saying is that you, you put the fence to here and to here, and, and the pool deck extends directly to this. This, this is the access point, and then maybe from here is the walkway that takes you to your...
So you still want, you still want a door on the...
Or from, you can have the cycle to the, the walkway that gets you from this point around without going through the pool, you can put the walkway up to here if you want to. I think that...
Are you okay with if I had a double opening?
Yeah, you can have a double opening.
Okay.
But I think that guarantees that if these people are separate from these people and, and there is some control, like I'm using the pool today and you can't come in, or I'm using the pool, you can't come in, then there's some separation that does it, and it does limit it as being a wide-open cabana to the pool.
Okay.
It's, it's, I still think it's a little precarious, but at least it, it meets what my intent would be of having separation, safety, having the ability, but people in the apartment not to act, interact with anybody inside the safety area of the pool.
Okay, that's a good compromise.
That is a separate accessory apartment. Otherwise you have something that's attached to the pool, that's attached to the house, which isn't really accessory.
Can I take a picture of that?
Sure. Do you have it? Sorry for the quick skitch, but I didn't mean to snap at you before, but it's...
I didn't, I didn't think you were snapping, I just wasn't understanding where...
We try hard, we try to be very helpful to residents, because we're all residents, but we, we are trying to hold and to, to govern and to protect properties so things don't become something else, and maybe the past application had risen all our blood pressures a little bit because it happened and it wasn't supposed to happen, and it causes great issue, and we spent a lot of time with that.
I'm also looking at it from my neighbor's point of view too, and I'm trying to make it so that there's just not another house plopped on my property, so I'm, I'm also looking at it from a resident's point of view and trying to make it a beautiful area for both myself and my neighbors so that I'm not upsetting my butters.
Yeah, you know, if we're, if we're talking, like a minimum of, of that could be four feet, and this is the pool deck, I think there's reasonable separation and yes, you could have...
I don't know that I have four feet, because I only own, how much do I, didn't you say I only have thirteen?
Well, you can, you can...
We have to write it down a little bit.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you, if you take this and maybe just move it so it starts here like that, you've, you've pushed it back this way, but you've also pushed it back that way a little bit along, so that that corner is ten feet off, but there's a little bit more separation here.
Okay.
And P is the minimum.
Ten feet is the minimum from the property line?
And then, then, I think it meets, or I know, from my opinion, it would meet, because it could be totally separate and be totally independent, although it's on, and it is a little, as much as we want the accessory apartment to be within view and it is subservient to the main dwelling, you still have to give privacy, you still have to create something that the resident in that apartment would have privacy so that it doesn't become defunct and nobody really wants to rent it because it is too close to the pool, and then it becomes a glorified pool house of which we've tried to stop or not allow. And so a, a condition like that and having that fence, to me, although I'd like to see it a little bit further or a little bit closer to the driveway, I, I could see that separation happening, or that you provided that separation and therefore...
Can I ask you a question, if it were, so if it were here, would that make any difference?
Yeah.
Put it right where that garden is. That's what I put it.
So, it's straddling.
Well, that's the problem.
Yeah, no, I got it, I got it right here, it's in Newbury, boy, you don't even have to come see it.
I think as long as there's this separation, it can happen anywhere around. Obviously, you probably don't wanna put it in the backyard where on this patio you have some privacy from, from this.
You also wanna maintain at least fifty feet here.
Yeah. So by pushing it back, that's gonna eat on the pond, isn't it?
Yeah, you might need to twist it a little bit, but you wanna try to stay out of the fifty-foot buffer, stay between fifty and a hundred.
Can you not flip this so the sunroom is facing this way?
You can't, because it's a hill.
So you, you can't get out of the sunroom if you put it over here, because this drops off of this one.
Too close to the fence, the other house.
Well, have, have, have the surveyor look at it a little closer proximity as to what can be tweaked here, but anywhere, anywhere that this condition occurs around the pool deck provides the separation. That's all, that's all I'm after, and actually the closer to, I would think closer to a parking space for somebody to walk to their unit and back.
And then your mother-in-law, right, it's your mother-in-law?
Mm-hmm.
Away from the, she can still get to the pool, but doesn't have to go around it?
So that's an issue with our neighbors over here, here.
Why is that?
Just the placement of it, he doesn't want it there.
But this guy wants it, but this guy wants it here? This guy's huge.
This guy just built his house on top of our stuff.
I would double check that, you're okay with it that close to that house?
I actually would like it there for privacy, from my pool. It will give us a little bit of privacy, because right now we don't have any privacy where that house was built. We have no privacy behind us.
Right, but you're also putting an apartment as the blocker for your privacy, because now you're, you're putting an apartment closer to their house, which doesn't give them much privacy, so again...
Or the person in the apartment.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, just trying to make sure that the apartment is as great as it can be, so it can be rented and it can be sought after, because that's a great asset to Newbury, and it's not just an asset to you and your, your home, but that's the definition of what the accessory apartment is trying to get at. So if you did, I, I mean, I wouldn't put the accessory apartment here and everyone's headlights are always shining on the accessory apartment, that would be a great location for it, because, but, I mean, if you did put it over here and you put a couple, is there any planting here, or is this just like all open?
It's all open. There's a shed there, but that's their driveway.
Oh, it comes up like this?
My property literally goes right up to their driveway. And actually I own six feet of, both of there. It's my land, but it's their land as well. Like my land stops and their starts, but mine goes over six feet onto their passing. This is our driveway that we own, and then six feet of...
You have a right-of-way at six feet. Yeah, I mean, I, I think certainly anywhere over here would be super, and I think here, as long as you can make some separation happen, then I, I don't think we... we have, I have any issues, I know the other board members do. But I think it meets the intent of what an apartment is supposed to be in terms of providing access to the users, whoever they may be, and not becoming what it's not supposed to be.
If the pergola is four feet from the accessory dwelling unit itself, if that is, if this is four feet from this, could I just add fencing here?
I think that kind of, as you said, would be ugly and it kind of detracts from it. And then you're going to put a double gate on to here. I mean, even if this, I would go back and look at it and see what you can do for the four feet and try and-
You'd see four, is four feet the minimum?
I'd like to see four feet. I think if you have them look closer and you can show what you can do to provide some separation that is reasonable, that someone steps off onto something and then steps over here, maybe it is a little less, because you just can't work it out. But I think there's some reasonability that we should come to, as long as you meet the intent of separation and-
But the fence.
Right, and there's a gate and the pool enclosure doesn't come and meet the house so that the apartment is part of the pool.
Yeah, the pool wasn't, the pool wasn't going, the house wasn't going right at the pool fence, that's why there was the pergola there, just-
Okay, but it's what, you know, having this fence come here or having the fence come to this point and return back to the house so that the face of the house is part of the pooled enclosure is what I'm against. Having this, the pool fence swing by however it does-
It goes like that, yeah.
So that this is the pool, this is here, and this is the pathway, and the person can go here and doesn't have to use this. That would mean if two people in the house are just, they're totally different, the apartment's still a good apartment.
So, but I couldn't just have a door here, right off of this?
Yeah, you could-
And not do this?
Yeah, I mean, if you didn't want to put a gate here and you just had this and the person had to walk around and access the pool from a different point, that'd be better. I think making the person walk across here or come out of their house would be on this loggia, which is a direct-
What if they had the opportunity to come out that way, or they had the opportunity to come out this way?
I think, yeah, you can have, I think we're looking for both of these. We're looking for some separation here and we're looking for a path around to the driveway.
But I can't just have this?
You can't just have that. If this, if the diagram is, here is your house and here is your loggia and the pool enclosure, does anything so that when you open the door, you're basically here and you step into the pool area, that's not going, that's not going to fly with me? If there's some separation where you can step out of your house and be on the deck and say, oh, I want to open the gate and go into the pool, or I can go this way, then I think it's separated enough. This gate for these people, depending on if they had a, I don't know, if they have a child in there, this gate could be locked and these people have access around, and then there's an accessory apartment that isn't just the pool house.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a few other things on the submittal to make it complete that she's going to have to list.
Sure.
Location of the utility trench. We've got to show how the utilities come from the main house.
They're already over there. When we did the addition above the garage, we put utilities over there, not like that we were going to eventually-
Perfect, but you need to show them on the submittal so we know where they are. We need-
Where should they go?
Wherever they are.
No, I know, but on that, on this paper?
Yep.
Okay. So they are-
You're going to need to show your parking spot on this paper. I think the locations of the neighboring houses, don't we want to see those to see how close they are? We generally require them to be spotted or located on the lots. You said this one's close, we believe you. I did look at the aerial shots, I don't know where those ones are. And then I also think the submissives require elevations or profiles or side views of your house, because you say it's supposed to be a character, we believe that, but-
So the one thing you should think about that we ask applicants is that we're here talking, we're understanding, we're getting into the details, we get it. But the application, if somebody looks at this and for the drawings that get submitted on the, with the decision and get recorded as part of your deed, if somebody else looks it up, we want the minimum there so that they could look at it and go, yep, okay, we've got it. We have people that submit stuff on like napkins and dimensions are missing or-
So the surveyor needs to put the houses on here?
Yeah, so utilities, a new plan layout, the parking spot, location of adjacent homes, and some simple elevations. They don't have to be overly detailed.
That will also show the pergola or the porch or whatever the heck it's called.
And if there's any lighting on the exterior?
And then, because what we also want to do is make this foolproof that if someone else was to come in and challenge this and say, why did you let this accessory apartment happen? And we say, well, here's the drawings, here's the layout, here's the neighbor, we checked out the lighting, we checked out the access, we checked out the size and character, and it's all right here. You'd like that for your neighbor, if they were proposing something, you'd like to have everything checked off to see it.
Do I need to show exactly where all the lighting is going right now? I mean-
Well, typically, if there's no access off the back of the house. So on another proposal, we had, they had a deck, and the question is, where is the lighting? Because the deck is in the back, the neighbor's here, the deck faces the neighbor's. Is the light, when this guy turns it on, going to shine on his property? So I would assume that if you're looking at this-
If you don't have the lights in the back, it would, yeah, it would be just facing our house.
If you have a front elevation with the lighting of the pergola and then make a statement that there's no additional exterior lighting, like for this.
I might use a pen, just like the red lighting, or will you give my writing writing on that?
So what we're going to do is we're going to make a motion to continue the hearing until the third week in June, of which time you can get the drawing updated, get it submitted back to Chrissy, she can email it to us and we can be prepared in the next meeting to review the updated information and move forward. So with that, we're going to make the motion to continue.
I make a motion to continue until our next meeting, which is June 20th, I believe?
Yes.
Here at City Hall at 7:30. Okay, so, second?
Second.
A favor?
Aye.
Aye. So as soon as you can get that done, the sooner you can get it to Chrissy, the sooner we can review it before the meeting and become prepared. If we have or see anything, then we can send it back to Chrissy to you and then we can make sure that everything is, we've seen everything, but before the next meeting.
Okay, so after June, you said it was the 30th?
Twice.
20th, 20th.
20th. After that, if they all look past, then what's the timeline of starting?
There's a 21 day appeal period?
20 day appeal period. So I can actually also draft the, draft the decision basically for the next hearing and then-
Hang on a second, Chrissy. So, Jack, understanding what we just said and discussed, and understanding the requirements that we showed in the diagram, do you have any, do you have any issue that was all met to?
No, I think it follows the checklist. You know, I think we brought up all the things that were, you know, not kosher, so no, I would have no objection.
Okay. So is there a motion to, for a decision?
We could make a motion to-
Draft a decision?
Request that Chrissy draft a decision in favor based on-
That's right.
Contingent on the stipulations that we've told the applicant, I forget.
My bad, that's right.
I'm sorry.
So is there a motion to be had to draft a decision?
I propose that we make a motion to draft a decision favorable to the applicant with the stipulations that we've just spent the last hour ago.
So as long as I meet all of these and show them to you guys, then-
Then you review the decision at the next hearing.
You will come back.
On June 20th?
On June 20th, we will open the meeting, we will review your documentation, check the boxes, we have a motion, or we will confirm the motion that we have. We also have a draft decision. Typically, we don't do this. Typically, we ask for the information, we review it, then we make a motion to draft, and so that could, that could kick you out two meetings. And so I think in the understanding that we just came to and the understanding of what we asked in terms of making it favorable, we're trying to move things forward here.
Okay, good. So then after the 20th, though, there'd still be the 20 days for the butters to?
Yeah, I'll mail it out that night, that night or the next day to the butters that it was approved, and then they have 20 days from like the 21st.
So you'd be saving a month.
Yeah, maybe saving a month. So by like July 1st, you'd be able to pick up the approved signed decision, because if no, as long as no appeals are made, and then you have to have it recorded. And once you send me back the recording information, I add it to the building permit.
And what if there are appeals?
Then we're into a process where somebody makes an appeal and then it comes back before us.
But if I meet all, if I meet all the criteria of it, is there?
Well, I think if we make a decision to vote favorably and somebody appeals it, it might be that they've asked you to put a tree up and you guys could figure out how to make something happen to make them drop their appeal and appease them and make it go away and keep going. If the-
What if they're like, we don't like the placement of it? But I mean, all the criteria of-
Then you have, you would have our backing and support that we made a decision that's favorable and that we reviewed and we went through all the requirements and that we made a favorable decision. And so the zoning board reviews would stand behind you. If they, if you guys couldn't come to agreement then, then the applicant, the challenger would have to take you to land court and they would have to, you know, clear the expense of figuring out whether it was really worth, worth it to do it.
Okay.
So if someone typically in a small town over a small issue has to weigh their, their costs of really what they feel. In the previous case, the adjacent neighbors have lived with conditions that they've seen, which is why it's a little bit more heated than something, I think most of the time, I don't know, that we rarely get an appeal. Unless it's something really unique and special or gardeners' attention, which the whole room is full and you've got the Hatfield's, McCoy's going at it, and then, so I would think, but that's the process.
You never know.
Right, so with that, is there, with that motion, is there a second? All right, is there any discussion on that? Think we're good? Chrissy, do you understand what we made a motion on?
Yes.
And the conditions that we've asked for?
Mm-hmm.
Same laws and fair?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll see you back in a month for a continued-
If I just, if I were to decide to move it, I just bring in with a new-
Yep, just try to get it done as soon as you can.
How to do it like a week before, so that we can get that in review.
Would that change the timeline?
No.
Still talk about it then?
We will keep the hearing open so that additional information can be submitted. We will draft the decision, you will get the drawings updated, Chrissy will get those to us, we will review them before the meeting and hopefully we will move quicker because everything is in lock and order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, from your neighbor, I guess.
I'm Megan, happy to be here.
We'd never see each other because I'm on Farview.
Oh, where is Farview?
It's, well, it's dead and free, it's kind of a buddy in your property.
Oh, are you behind, are you behind Andy and Bob?
Oh, Mary's next to Peter, Newberry. We still have one more.
Paul, do you have any questions for us?
No, no, I'm all-
Okay, good. We're going to move on to the next piece of business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, sorry.
Okay, our other business is Cricket Lane, 55 R Pearson Drive Project, and we have on the agenda project status and project requirements list.
So I emailed you all earlier. Town council reviewed the regulatory agreement, I understand that this is a copy that I emailed you, but-
I did read it, Mark.
I know, I didn't know.
I bet.
I'm trying to get some more of the points here.
So anyway, town council reviewed the regulatory agreement and made a couple of comments reviewing the agreement against the conditions and the decision. One is that the, the decision required that out of the six affordable units, one be a four bedroom unit, and five be three bedroom units, and the regulatory agreement doesn't actually mention that, I mean, it references the decision, but it doesn't actually kind of spell that out. And the other comment that she had was regarding the eligible purchaser, which from the deed writer indicates that that would be a first time home buyer. And, you know, Lisa's comment was, you know, what if it were, you know, somebody else who was not a first time home buyer who was eligible? So Doug called me, sent me this email today and then called me and said that they would be, you know, fine with including those provisions in the regulatory agreement as long as mass housing is signed with them. So that's kind of worked, and he thinks he may get an answer on that tomorrow. So his question to you all was, would you, you know, assuming everybody's in agreement on those, would you all be, you know, glad you wanted to sign the regulatory agreement? I was hoping that we wouldn't have to go up to the next meeting, so I thought we could get the signatures.
So the question is, if mass housing agrees to allow these modifications that they've agreed to, will we sign it, well, after they agree, I hope?
Yes, he would maybe give us your information.
Are you looking for us to sign the signature page tonight and hold it until this comes into you?
I didn't bring, I think he would, he would, he would provide a new one, I don't know, I didn't bring a signature page.
If this is Lisa's reviews and these are her comments on the agreement, then I would have no issue with these being included, period. I don't think anyone else would.
No.
So if, if it runs due course and Mr. Tuchaine can figure out with mass housing that it's all acceptable and he can provide you the language or the updated pages, then we would be willing to sign.
Yeah. The signatures need to be notarized.
Correct, so who, the front desk?
Gretchen is a notary.
Okay, and if Gretchen's not here?
Doug said he would be more than happy to come down, he's a notary himself, and if it took that, he would come down here and notarize your signatures.
So you got to come down here on Saturday morning with coffee and bagels?
I don't know.
You're supposed to be at a site, that's what, we can do it all at the same time?
I laugh, but I'm just trying to figure when I'm available.
We understand.
It's like driving home at 7:30 or like at the weekend, Saturday morning, and I'm willing to try to make, make it over here to do it Friday. Sometimes I'm home, but you're not open here, so just trying to figure it out.
You can make it work. Doug's willing to do it then, if that sort of pays, otherwise we're open until, you know, 7 on Tuesdays.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we're in agreement that we would accept this. You have to see it, you have to get the whole agreement and then we need to come in and sign. Does Mario have to sign? Does Michelle have to sign? Do we all sign?
I think the voting members were you, Mario, and Jack, so-
This was an easy one.
Very close for you.
So let's, you'll give us the appropriate email and you'll probably tell us the, again, the instructions that we have to do to get it in the right, so let's just do that as due course.
Good.
Okay, is there any other business?
So that's it. I know that Mr. Erickson is still trying to get the pre-construction conference set up, so those are kind of the two things. I actually did go through the decision and the final drawings, and I think there are some things that still need to be added, like the architectural drawings and that kind of stuff, so it's going to send in a list with a CC to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm surprised architectural drawings don't call out where the four and three bedrooms are.
Well, it's on the phasing plan, so there's a phasing plan of which ones will be the affordable units.
Yeah.
And I think what Lisa was suggesting was that it should also be shown.
Noted on that, yeah, yeah.
As well as noted in the regulatory agreement.
Yeah.
I saw it, so that's what I was looking for, that doesn't... It shows where the low-income owns, but not the number of bedrooms.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Usually there's like a little, a unit next. A little unit next.
You guys have new Cinder, Cinder, 5 Cinder Avenue, which was previously submitted, and Chrissy gave you the skinny that it's basically the same as was previously submitted.
And we agreed that last time, correct?
Yes, they just didn't move forward in time.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, a was a favor?
Aye.